Good evening, everyone. I think we're gonna get started. Do you want to, yeah, I think it's better. Or at least close one door. Elijah, you want to introduce? I want to thank everybody for coming tonight. We got quite a crowd, so we're gonna do our best to, you know, get through the presentation and address everyone's comments tonight. My name is Joe Pavel. I work for Mass DOT's Bridge Project Management Section. If you didn't sign in tonight, I just want to remind everybody to please sign in on your way out. So if you didn't sign in, please sign, sign in on the way out tonight. We do want to have a record of everyone in attendance tonight. You also have handouts, on the back end, handouts or comment forms. You can choose to speak tonight, and it will become part of the record. You may also submit your comments either tonight, or we ask within 10 business days. You can leave it with anybody here tonight on the team, and we'll make sure that your comments are included as part of the record. So real quickly, I want to just introduce some of the speakers. We have Ali Tali. You just raise your hand when I say your name. Mark Kolenowski, both with HNTB. Alex Su with HNTB. And we have Don Cook with VHB. These are gonna be the presenters tonight, along with myself. We also have many other staff that have been helping put this together over the last several months, leading up to tonight's meeting, that are here to answer questions as we go through the process. We also have a transcript of tonight's hearing. We have David Frazier, who's with Arlington Typing and Mailing. He's gonna be taking a verbatim transcript of tonight's meeting. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to go over our project. We're gonna do a presentation on the project. This is your opportunity to officially submit your comments, concerns, criticisms. We're here to listen to you, so this is your opportunity to speak. We did do extensive public outreach on this project, and we did advertising for tonight's meeting. I'm not gonna go through the whole list, because it's quite extensive, but I do have it, and I'm gonna provide it to Arlington Typing and Mailing, to David, to include as part of the transcript after tonight's hearing. The transcript will be made available on DOT website. It's gonna take a few weeks, because they have to go through it, provide it to us. We review it. Once that's complete, it will be on the DOT website, in both English and Spanish. Although this is the official 25% hearing, we're not done with public outreach. We anticipate further meetings with local community, community groups. We have extensive outreach that we still need to do with local businesses, which we intend to do following this meeting. We also want to come back again, as we finalize the plans with the public information meeting, to let you know how we've addressed your comments and how we're moving forward with the project. In addition, this has been asked quite often on previous meetings. We will have a 24-hour hotline during construction, and that will be both in Spanish and English, to answer questions throughout this entire process of construction. Before we start, I just want to go over a few of the project facts, and the design team's gonna get into a lot of details on the project. This project is a full superstructure replacement with some major rehabilitation of all of the columns that you see in the parking lots underneath. The project extends just north of the Carter Street on and off ramps, and it extends all the way up to the Tobin Bridge. The current cost is approximately $110 million. We expect that this is gonna increase as the final design is complete, as projects of this magnitude and nature typically do. This project is federally funded at 80%, and the state will be picking up the remaining 20%. As far as schedule, we anticipate completing the design over the next few months, and advertising the project in late March, early April. The reason for that is we need to procure a contractor and issue construction notice to proceed by the fall of 2018. We anticipate final completion of the project, and we'll go through the schedule in detail, to be late 2020, early 2021, to be 100% done with the project. Typically, for, for all public hearings, we go through a right-of-way script. We do not have any right-of-way takings on this project. We're doing everything within the state layout, so there's no temporary impacts, there's no permanent takings. So the right-of-way script, I'm gonna provide it, and we will include it in the transcript. I'm gonna turn it over to Ali Tali to do a, a presentation on the project. I would ask that everybody please hold their questions until we get to the, through the presentation. Everybody will have an opportunity to speak tonight.
Thanks, Joe. Thanks, everybody, for coming tonight. I look forward to hearing your feedback on the project. What, what our team is going to do tonight is that we're going to discuss the, the details of the project, as to what we're doing, why it is we're doing it, how we're doing it, and when we're doing it. We will also talk about the anticipated projects on the community and the traveling public. And we'll also discuss the environmental review process, as well as the public outreach plan and process. At, at the end, we will open it up to questions. As Joe mentioned, please hold your questions until we, we get to the, through the presentation. The project team consists of Mass DOT Highway Division, who is the proponent of the project, Federal Highway Administration, who is participating in funding of the project, as well as exercising oversight of the project. The design team, we have a very robust design team, consisting of HNTB as the lead designer, as well as a number of design consultant, sub consultants, including Howard Stein-Hudson, CME, VHB, and Green International. So coordinating our, our project with both City of Chelsea as the MBTA, and as well as a number of other agencies. The limits of the project, as Joe mentioned, starts at the southern end, just north of the Fourth Street Bridge, Fourth Street, and continues all the way to north of the high school and Carter Street. It consists of two structure sections. We call them the South Viaduct and North Viaduct. They're separated by, by an upgrade section in between. The south, southern section extends over the railroad commuter rail. It also, the, the structures include two ramps, that, that's shown in orange here at Carter Street, and ramp at Arlington Street. These are both ramps on the southbound side. The, the one at Arlington Street is an on-ramp. The one at Carter Street is an off-ramp. We also have two upgrade ramps, Sixth Street and, and Carter. This is a bird's eye view of the project, project limits, including the, the ramps. Now, Chelsea Viaduct is, is a major component of the transportation infrastructure in the greater Boston area. It is a designated evacuation route. It carries over 63,000 vehicles per day. It carries Route 1 through Chelsea. As I said, there are two viaduct structure sections. The southern one, 2,000 feet, and the northern one, about 1,000, and it carries the MBTA bus 111. Anybody who has walked under the, the structure has noticed that, that it is, it has significant deterioration and is in need of repairs. The structure is safe to carry traffic, however, because of the extensive rusting, paint peeling, and, and swelling and the lamination of the concrete, it is in need of repair. And the, the owner of the, the structure, Mass DOT, needs to keep this in state of good repair in order to keep it in safe operating condition. The goals of the project, as I mentioned, address structurally deficient conditions, these deteriorated sections. We plan to advertise the project early spring of 2018, in order to coordinate it with the Tobin Bridge Rehab, Rehab Project. Right now, there is ongoing deck replacement of the Tobin, and by aligning this, this project with the Tobin, we reduce the impact to both the bidders, the local community, and the traveling public. We're also utilizing what's called accelerated bridge construction methods to reduce the impacts to both the, the local community and the traveling public. We have completed the preliminary structures report, the design, functional design report. We have completed subsurface explorations, the survey, and the 25% design. A value engineering study has also been completed and evaluated. Approximate cost is about 110 million. As I mentioned, we are right now at the Design Public Hearing phase in, in January. The next step will be to move into final design and complete that in February of 2018, and prepare a bid package in March of 2018, to allow for bidders to bid on the job and, and award it, in order to align this project with, with the Tobin. The public outreach efforts will continue through the design and construction of the project, as Joe mentioned. Public outreach to date, I'll just touch upon a few major ones. We've had a public information meeting, open, we've held an open house. We've met with Chelsea Collaborative Organization. We've met with Chelsea Green Roots Organization. We've had an all-Spanish public information meeting. We've also had several pop-up meetings and door-to-door project notifications. We're still coordinating at, future meetings with the business community, as well as coordinations with the City of Chelsea. So I'm gonna talk a little bit about the details of the work, what, what the work entails. So as, as Joe mentioned, we're replacing the majority of the, the superstructure of the existing viaduct and repairing, having the, what we call the substructure or supporting components of the structure. We will use ABC methods, accelerated bridge construction methods, that I will get into more detail a little later, to reduce the time it requires to, to do this work. For majority of the viaduct, there are isolated locations where that method cannot be used, and we, we will be using more conventional methods to, to do those isolated locations. I'll talk about these in more detail. We'll also provide new crash-tested barriers, snow fence where we can, road, new roadway lighting on the viaduct, new bridge drainage. We will also rebuild the existing parking lots under the viaduct, including new drainage and new underbridge lighting, and we will, we will be building a new parking lot at, at Carter Street, across from the high school. So these graphics show the intended repairs of the substructure. The substructure is, oops, sorry. So the substructure is this portion of the viaduct, which is up to here. It includes the column and this crossbeam. The superstructure are these beams that run along the viaduct, plus the concrete deck above it. What we're gonna do is we're gonna clean up these steel columns and encase them in concrete. We have displays outside that I invite you to, to examine more closely, to look at some possible alternatives for the appearance of these. We've looked at several different options for these encasements, that some, some, some may look better than others, depending on, on your objective preferences. Please review these, and if you have any comments or feedback, we would appreciate it. We have also shown options that you could have displays mounted on top of these encasements, that you, we could, we could mount local, local artists' work on, on these, on these encasements. By, by rebuilding these columns and encasing them in concrete, we, we're, we can put in new crossbeams on the, on the column encasements that will allow for rapid reconstruction of the superstructure. So the, the accelerated bridge construction method that I, that I mentioned earlier consists of using two steel beams with a precast concrete deck, all fabricated in the shop and delivered to the site. So these pieces allow rapid replacement of portion of the viaduct. So this is, this is the superstructure portion. Once we have completed the repair and, and rehab of those columns and have placed those crossbeams on it, this allows us to come in and every night, replace a portion of the viaduct and, and complete this work that could take years, in, in a matter of nine months. These graphics will, will kind of try to show that the concept. This is the, the existing viaduct. What we will do is, we will place these movable barriers to allow two lanes of traffic to be maintained during regular hours, morning, morning hours. The red outline shows the section of the viaduct that we will be replacing. There will be quite a bit of prep work that will go into that. During the weekend, during the evening hours, that movable barrier will be shifted to limit the, the, the traffic to one lane, opens up the work area, allows for cranes to be set up, and a delivery truck to come in with the, the prefabricated units. These prefabricated, the existing section will be removed, and the prefabricated unit will be placed. During this time, we will have tow trucks available at each end of the section that is being worked at, in case of breakdowns or, or disabled vehicles, to remove these quickly and allow traffic to continue operating. Where the work is over, parking lots or local, local roadway, we will have detours that we will talk about later on. These detours will be limited to weeknights for short, short-term periods. So once the morning comes, the barrier is shifted back, two lanes of traffic is resumed, and we move to the next section of the viaduct. This process is completed for each lane of traffic throughout the viaduct, until one stage is completed, then the next, once that stage is completed, we move to the, to the next lane and repeat the process. Each section, each stage is anticipated to take about two to three months, so the entire superstructure replacement using this technique can be done in about nine months. There are sections of the viaduct that we cannot use this technique, limited sections, because of geometric constraints. These are shown in this light blue, at, right at the start of the viaduct from Tobin. There's five spans just north of Fourth Street, as well as the span over the commuter rail. For these spans, we use a more conventional, which consists of removing the existing deck, repairing and cleaning the, the top of the existing steel, and putting in prefabricated deck elements, grid deck elements, to, to reconstruct the, to reconstruct the superstructure. This, this work is more time-consuming, so we will talk about what we will do to, to try to expedite this and reduce impact to the, to the, to the local community, as well as the traveling public. The construction schedule to align it, Tobin Bridge work, we, we hope, we plan to advertise the project in March of 2018, start the substructure rehabilitation in winter of 2019, and continue it and complete it by winter of 2020. Superstructure work, using that accelerated method, will start in spring, by fall of 2020. 2021, we, we will complete the final paving and punch list of the work, and spring of 2021, the project will be completed. As Joe mentioned, outreach process and the hotline and, and continued support of feedback from the community will, will continue through the construction. The traffic impacts during construction are twofold. For the substructure work, we, we, we will have practically no impact to, to Route 1 travel, during peak travel times. Spring to fall of 2020, both northbound and southbound will, will have impact to traffic as, as follows. The southbound traffic will be reduced from three lanes to two lanes. The northbound, the Tobin works, two-lane zone of work will be extended through our project. The northbound and southbound will go to- So as I mentioned, the, this work will replace nine months of nightly work in, in these areas to 12 weekends. Don is gonna talk about the, some of the traffic evaluations we've, we've done for the project.
Thanks, Ali. Good evening. I'm gonna take a step back just for a minute and talk a little bit more about the bigger picture, sort of the regional picture. I'm talking really most specifically to those nine months in 2020, when you'll see lane closures on Route 1 up above during the day. Alex and some of the HNTB folks will be getting up after I'm done and talking more about some of the more localized things that you'll be seeing down below, which for a number of people, or most of the people in this audience, that may be something you're at least equally, if not more, concerned with. So when we start thinking about a project like this from a regional basis, with a road like Route 1, as Ali had said, that carries a high volume of traffic, and we're thinking about needing, the need to take a lane throughout the day, the first thing we need to understand is who's using the viaduct. Now, it varies from day to day. It varies from week to week and month to month. But there are some general trends that we're able to glean from both regional travel demand models and the, the sort of wealth of traffic information and data that we have. So what I'm showing here is just a snapshot of the morning peak rush hour, in terms of who's using the viaduct. And it's probably not a surprise to most of the people in the room here. And what you're seeing is somewhere between 70 and 80% of the people on the viaduct during that morning rush are starting their trip somewhere on the North Shore, along the Route 1 corridor, south of 128. So that's the bulk of folks who are using the viaduct. Interesting enough, as we start to dive into it, though, there's a, there's at least a notable volume of people that are both coming from the North Shore, north of 128, New Hampshire, northern Mass, and also a very, a smaller piece coming down the 93 corridor that ultimately ends over onto the viaduct through this section, that works out to be about 15 to 25% on a typical day. As I get, as I go forward, that's an important number to keep in track of, because the further people are away when they start their trip, the more options they have to take alternate routes. And those are at least the folks that we're initially targeting to try to get them off of the viaduct, so that with the reduction in the lane, we're not creating even more congestion along the route. Along Route 1 South, just for your information, through this area, you're carrying somewhere between 3,500 and upwards, close to 4,000 vehicles an hour during those morning rush hours. So then the next sort of evaluation we do is, for that year of 2020, for those nine months between spring and fall, we take that lane away during the day, and we want to understand what's going to happen. Who's gonna divert? How many of those folks are gonna divert? And where are they going? So we ran through that analysis, and again, I'm showing you mostly AM. The northbound is a very, almost a mirror image. I mean, obviously, if you start somewhere in the morning and you end up somewhere at work, you're making that reverse trip for the most part in the afternoon. And what we're seeing when we run those analyses is we're getting somewhere between 20 and 25% of the current volume will divert to an alternate route. Now, you might say, you've got three lanes, you're taking one away, that's a third. Shouldn't that be 33%? But what we see on projects like this is people have choices to make. They're primarily making them based on the overall travel time from start to finish of their trip. With all the phones we have now and everything, people can make those decisions even better than they used to. We're not seeing that full 33%. We're seeing somewhere between 20 and 25%. Where we're seeing them going is all of sort of the typical routes that you would expect, you know? We're expecting some of those North Shore people to stay on the 1A corridor, come down and use the tunnel systems to get in and out of Boston. We're seeing smaller percentages using the 93 corridor, the Felsway corridor, Route 99 and Alfred Street. So all of the, the normal places that maybe even some of you use as alternate routes when you hear that Route 1 is congested during these peak periods. But again, the important part is we're talking 20 to 25% diversion is what we're trying to achieve, and what we think we can achieve. So we're not getting that 33%. Some folks will just decide to stick it out and drive through the construction zone, either because they don't feel those alternate routes provide them a lot of relief. A lot of those routes are also congested, so they're not really, that, those diversions are gonna disperse. Not, not one route is taking all of this diversion. But when we see that diversion take place, that's going to help. But I wouldn't be able to stand up here, and if I did, you shouldn't believe me. and tell you that when we take a lane away during morning and evening rush hours, there's not going to be some impact on the travel along Route 1 through this area. So the other great thing about technology, it's not all great. But you've seen those signs that the state has been putting up about how many miles and how many minutes. And there's actually one southbound on Route 1 just after the Route 16 off-ramp. That's all based on sensors that are out, tracking your Bluetooth, your phone signatures, your car signatures, establishing travel times. So we were able to pull travel time information between Route 16 and the Charlestown off-ramps, both during the morning southbound rush and the evening northbound rush, to get a feel for how long does it take today and how much of an impact do we think we're going to have that when we take that lane away during the 2020 construction season. So in pulling that data, we look at averages, we look at minimums and maximums. So the averages over those periods to get from Route 16 down to the Charlestown off-ramps is around 15 minutes. But before, you go crazy. We do realize the top graph here that you see, are those days when, whether it's weather or there was an accident or there's just more congestion, we're looking at anywhere, it could take 35, almost to 40 minutes to make that trip. When we take the lane away in our analysis, we're seeing about a 20% increase in that travel time. Sounds like a lot. I don't like to drive any more than anybody else trying to get to my destination. But on the average, where we're talking about 15 minutes along that trip, 20% adds about three minutes. When we're talking about the extremes, the 30, 35-minute trips, that's going to add six or seven more minutes. So that's just for context for you to thinking about what you might be experiencing driving through along the viaduct. We did the same thing for the PM. Once you break three coming up out of Boston North and you get across to Tobin, it's not always great, but up until Route 60, a lot of the times, it's better. We see those averages down closer to the five-minute mark with the maximums up around the 12 to 15-minute mark. We think there's going to be a slight increase in the percentage increase northbound during the year of 2020 on about a 40% level. But when you're talking about 40% on top of five minutes, you're talking a couple of extra minutes. 40% on top of the 15-minute max, you're talking about another five or six minutes. So that's sort of what you can anticipate traveling along Route 1 during this particular construction season. Before I turn it back over to HNTB to talk a little bit more about the localized impacts, which again, I'm sure many of you, if not most of you, are more concerned with somebody from New Hampshire getting to Boston during this thing. There's a whole slew of things that Mastod has been putting forward in the last few years that you've seen them use on projects like the Fast 14 replacement on I-93 a few years ago, Callahan during the Callahan Tunnel closure, ComAb project this summer, Springfield Viaduct, for those who get out there, has been under construction the last three years. And they've really helped. So the first thing is really a robust outreach program, making sure that all of you and everyone understands what's going on, when it's going on, what are your options, just making sure no one's or trying to minimize the number of people that are getting surprised by this project. I'm going to talk a little bit more in detail, but really a comprehensive police detail program. We can do a lot with signs and boards and setups and public outreach. But sometimes on the ground, day to day, the police and their control of traffic can do more for us than anything else. Field monitoring and adjustment. Day one of the implementation in 2020 of that lane closure up top, Mastod, their consultants, that will be in the field monitoring. As much as we can try to project what's going to happen, anything can happen. And we want to be prepared for that and be prepared to adjust to that. I will tell you that what happens day one will not be what happens day two or day three or day four. The first few weeks is a settling out period where everybody's trying different routes or saying, hey, I'm hearing it's not so bad. So we have to be prepared to make those adjustments on the fly on a day-to-day basis. And to Joe's point, that's where that hotline becomes very important. Getting the real information from the traveling and motoring public as to what's happening can help us adjust better. Real-time traffic management system, that's a fancy way for those boards, not only the permanent ones, but the temporary ones, that warn you of the construction and give you an idea of the travel time, so many miles, so many minutes. And again, that system will be extending out to and beyond 128 so that we can try to capture those people that have longer trips and inform them and help them make better decisions about where they're trying to get. The HNTB folks will talk a little bit more about the local detour plans that will be associated with some of their short-time ramp closures and other things that they're doing down below. Signal quarter and optimization, doing the best we can with traffic signals to make sure that they're timed properly for the anticipated increase in volume along certain quarters that we expect. Incident response operation, that's a really fancy way of saying tow trucks. You know, lately, and Ali had mentioned to it, there'll be a very strong requirement in this contract that the contractor will require to have multiple towing apparatus at the ready with a certain minimum amount of response time so that in any kind of breakdowns or accident or anything, we get those vehicles cleared as quickly as possible. And then the last thing is obviously there's other projects that will be happening in this area, in this region. We just have to make sure we're being smart how we're coordinating with those projects. So the last thing I thought I'd just touch on quickly is the police detailed deployment. This is a very initial thought. You probably all have many thoughts and comments for tonight. The one thing we would really like to get is if you think there is a particular route or intersection locally here that's of concern to you during this project, mention it tonight so we can get it on our list and we can make sure that we've got the right police detailed coverage starting day one when we implement the closures up above in 2020. So with that, I'll turn it over to Alex to take you through some of the more localized traffic.
Thanks, Don. Thanks, Don. As Don and Ali mentioned earlier, there will be some local nighttime traffic detours for when they're placing those PBUs over the local roadways. So the local roadways that will be impacted with local nighttime closures will be the Fifth Street Road, Arlington Street, Spruce Street, Carter Street, and Orange Street. These nighttime closures are going to be intermittently throughout the superstructure phase of this project. And they will happen at nighttime for a few days at a time from 7:00 PM to 6:00 AM. So these won't be closed during the entire time. It should just be a few nights at a time. There'll be weekend closures for the Carter Street off-ramp. These will be about six to eight weeks during the superstructure phase of the project. The Arlington Street on-ramp and the Fourth Street off-ramp are going to be closed for the duration, so the nine-month period of the superstructure replacement. And then there will also be nightly closures for the Carter Street on-ramp and the Sixth Street on-ramp during the first stage of the superstructure work when work will be done on the outer lanes of Route 1. And for all of these closures, there'll be significant advanced warning of these closures ahead of time so that you can make plans accordingly. And so I'm going to just step through each of our detour plans briefly so that you can see what the impacts are. These will be online after this presentation tonight so you can look at them in more detail and you can provide comments in writing after. So for the Arlington Street on-ramp, so this is one of the closures that will happen for the duration, vehicles will be directed to use Carter Street. Vehicles, Orange Street is one-way towards Route 16. So again, just like the Fifth Street detour, we'll be providing police details at the entrance to the roadway to allow access from those who are coming from Route 16 to be able to access this end of Orange Street. The Arlington Street detour, vehicles will be directed to use Spruce Street. Now we're getting into the nighttime closures for Sixth Street on-ramp as well as the Carter Street on-ramp. These ramps are going to be closed at night, so late nighttime from 10:00 PM to 5:00 AM when Route 1 is being closed to one lane in each direction during Stage 1 of the superstructure replacement. So vehicles who use the Sixth Street on-ramp will be directed to use Spruce Street to get up to Route 16. And those who use the Carter Street on-ramp will be directed on EverAv to use the EverAv on-ramp. The Carter Street off-ramp will be closed on the weekends for about six to eight weekends while they reconstruct that ramp. So vehicles will be directed to use the previous off-ramp at Route 16 to get to their points in Chelsea. So Arlington Street on-ramp. We've heard a lot of community feedback regarding concerns on the permanent closure of the Arlington Street on-ramp. We wanted to do a little presentation tonight to offer our reasonings behind this consideration. There's no decision that's made yet on the closure of this ramp, but we wanted to show you what our justification report had outlined and allow you to make comment at the end of the presentation. So some of the factors that went into considering the closure of the ramp were volumes on the ramp, sightlines at the merge area of the ramp, as well as the geometry of the ramp. So when we took counts along the ramp, volumes on the Arlington Street on-ramp were about 1,400 vehicles per day. When you compare those to the other on-ramps within the corridor, Carter Street has about 2,000 vehicles per day that use that ramp, and then the EverAv on-ramp's about 6,000 vehicles per day. Then when you look at the spacing between those ramps, Carter Street is about a quarter mile north, and then EverAv is about half a mile south of the ramp. So that's less than a mile, and you have three ramps along the corridor. So highway design recommendations recommend that in urban areas for freeways, you have about one-mile spacing between ramps. So when you have spacing that's closer than that, you add friction, you add conflict points, and then you can add delay to the main line of the highway. So when we looked at the geometry of the ramp, we saw that the design speed for the ramp was designed at 15 miles per hour. And then when you take a look at the speed for the main line, we're looking at 45 mile-per-hour posted speed limit in this area. So you have a big differential between the design of the ramp and the speeds on the main line. So when you look at that, there's not a lot of space to quickly accelerate from that lower speed to the higher-speed ramp. We took a look at the sightlines of the ramp. So for a 45 mile-per-hour speed on the ramp, we're just shy of the sightlines needed to be able to see vehicles who are merging on from the Arlington Street on-ramp. When you consider speeds on Route 1 that are likely higher than the posted speed, that creates a bigger differential between the sightlines that you need. So when we took a look at the volumes and we took a look at all these factors, we wanted to make sure, is there going to be added delay to the local roads? So what we did was we projected out volumes to 2040. We looked at development. We looked at population growth. We looked at employment growth within the area. And we did analysis on those local roads. So we had projected that people would use Spruce Street. People would use Broadway to get to the Everett on-ramp. And then there will be a small number of people that will use the Carter Street on-ramp. So when we looked at this, we looked that there would not be significant added delays to those roadways. Also in consideration was that, independent of this project, the MBTA bus was already going to be moving the Route 111 route to use the Everett on-ramp. And then, I don't know if you wanted to discuss some extra?
Thank you. I just want to mention one thing about Ramp A. We've had a lot of discussion on it. We've met with some of the community groups. We have been listening, so we backed off on any decisions on it. We want to hear your comments tonight. But we did want to go through this exercise of what our thoughts were and methodology and why we were recommending, you know, full closure of this ramp. One thing I want to mention about the ramp, somebody had mentioned at one of the meetings, I don't remember who, but they asked, what would we do with the land if the ramp was closed? And my response was that we're going to be providing parking for DCAM. It was a commitment that Mastod made before we even started this project. We have enough space. We took another look at it. We can still accommodate the parking that we committed and provide about an acre, a little less than acre of open green space that is something that we'd be able to work with the community to do something with. So I just want to mention that if the ramp were closed, we would be able to do something with that land.
Good evening. My name is Mark Kalanowski. I'm an environmental planner with HNTB. We've come out to the community, met with various groups a few times, and I've heard of many of your concerns. And there's a lot of them, justfully. So what we're going to do here, we're going to address a few of the ones that we've heard consistently throughout, talk about what our plan is, how we're going to mitigate those. And obviously, we'll get to dealing with many more of your additional concerns during the question-and-answer session. Real quick, what I want to talk about, we'll talk about noise, dust control, lead paint abatement, relocation of parking and our plan for dealing with the temporary loss of parking underneath the structure. And talk about, again, how we're going to mitigate these impacts. So this is an active construction site, or it will be an active construction site. There's going to be demolition of the existing structure and the replacement of a new bridge deck. It's going to be loud. There is heavy machinery. There's heavy construction equipment that's going to be in operation. There's going to be jackhammering, saw cutting, you know, through concrete and steel. This is unavoidable noise impacts, and we understand that. What we're going to do to address this is the contractor will be required to work with an acoustic engineer to develop a noise mitigation plan. What Mastod is in the process of doing right now is out-measuring the existing ambient-level noise volumes of the areas around the viaduct. Once we have those and we understand those, the contractor will then be given a limit to which they can exceed the existing volume, depending on what the location of the closest noise receptor is, be it that receptor a school, a residence, a business, another community facility, what have you. Once they have that noise plan in place, if the contractor anticipates in consultation with their acoustic engineer that they'll be exceeding those levels, they will have to come up with temporary noise abatement measures. Traditionally, what that looks like is a noise barrier. What that noise barrier will do, they'll put up a block between whatever's creating that noise and then the closest receptor. What else is going to be done is there will be a limitation on what activities can be performed, when. We mentioned earlier that during that 55-hour weekend closure, We mentioned earlier that during that 55-hour weekend closure, that the contractor will be permitted to operate 24 hours a day. However, they will not be able to operate the most noise-producing equipment during nighttime hours. So there's going to be no saw cutting or jackhammering at specific locations, you know, during those restricted hours. There will be a temporary loss of parking beneath the viaduct during all phases of the project. This is going to be needed for staging of the contractor equipment. They'll be going underneath, and exactly how that's going to be staged and where that parking will be temporarily relocated, we're not sure what that's going to look like quite yet, but these are temporary impacts that we do anticipate to occur. One of the mitigation plans for this is to design and construct a new parking lot on Carter Street adjacent to the high school, and residents and users of the parking lots, wherever there's that temporary loss, will be directed to utilize that parking lot. After the project, we're still in conversations with the city to determine what will happen with that parking lot. One thing that we have heard regarding parking is that there's concerns about contractors utilizing and taking up public spots on the road. We can assure you that they will be directed not to do so. It'll be specifically stated in the project contract that there will be no utilization of public spots outside of the designated areas within Mastard right away where they can park their equipment. I didn't realize I was blocking the screen until I just looked back. If you do see that, if that does happen, please call. We direct that. Mastard takes that very serious. We understand the limited parking available in the communities, and if it is occurring, it cannot occur. So again, please utilize that 24-hour hotline to express those concerns. Dust and lead, obviously a major concern. We understand, and we've met with green routes, we've met with collaborative, and we understand that this is, you know, a major issue for local residents. We can assure you that there will be the most state-of-the-art, up-to-date contract specifications put in place to control the spread of, or ensure that there is no spread of lead into local water, local soils. During demolition activities, I'm sorry, during paint-removing activities, the contractor will be required to use a negative pressure containment system around where they are removing that paint. What that looks like is they take a plastic sheeting, wrap it around where they'll be removing the paint, and then they basically create a vacuum. You might have seen it, they had a similar operation set up in the Carter Street parking lot over the summer. And what this does, this ensures that negative pressure ensures that all the paint chips and all the dust created through those paint removal operations, it stays there within that system, that's all then wrapped up and shipped off-site. The contractor will also be required to apply water during all demolition activities to ensure that there isn't an overabundance of dust within the area. We've also identified specific areas of concern around residences, the Vietnam Veterans Memorial Pool, schools, playgrounds, where they are going to be required to, you know, like make sure that this is adhered to. There is zero flexibility in the application or in the control of dust and lead. The contractor will also be required to have an independent environmental monitor onsite to ensure that all the contract specifications and the directives that Mastard is putting on them in regards to these matters are adhered to. Mastard has been in communication with the city, the city of Chelsea, to develop a mitigation plan. This is not saying that these mitigation measures are it, set in stone. Again, we're here, we want to hear from you. If there's additional ideas, please bring them forth. For the sake of having these on the record, I'm actually going to go through these bullets, and I'm going to read them one by one, not because I don't think that you can do it yourself, but because I want to read them out loud. So mitigation right now is as followed. An allowance given to the city to provide for additional crossing guards during construction at schools and other public facilities. Geometric improvements to the Everett Street on-ramp. Funding and design for Carter Street ramp intersection improvements. Those last two bullets, the Everett Street on-ramp improvements and the design of the Carter Street on-ramps, those would be mitigation if Ramp A were to be closed. So if Ramp A stays, then these improvements wouldn't necessarily be part of the mitigation package. Architectural improvements to the support columns, which Ollie was talking about earlier, and an opportunity for there to be a rotation of local artists' installations. Funding for a Route 1 corridor enhancement project to be implemented by the city of Chelsea. Mastard and the city are still in negotiations of exactly what this Route 1 enhancement program would look like, but it is being discussed. Weekend construction to reduce duration and impacts to abutters. This is what Ollie was talking about earlier with the nighttime, or the weekend close, those 55-hour blocks on the weekends. And so to reiterate, what that is going to do is what would essentially take nine months of nighttime work in impacting the abutters at those residences of those operations at night, we're going to do so over the course of about 12 55-hour weekends. We're going to improve the lighting underneath the structure to improve safety conditions. The installation of new fire suppression system on the viaduct. The parking lots underneath will all be repaved, all be restripped. We're actually working to restripe them in such a way where we hope to add more parking beyond what's existing. And strict incentives and disincentives will be placed upon the contractor to ensure a timely project delivery. What this means is if they go beyond the construction schedule for certain activities, that they get penalized. They end up paying quite heavily if they go beyond what they agreed to with the project contract. And again, to reiterate, we are still listening, we do still want to hear, the conversation is not over. This is the 25% Design Public Hearing. There is opportunity for your voice to be heard, so please come forth. The project is funded with federal aid administered by the Federal Highway Administration. As such, that federal aid is considered a federal action, and the project is required to comply with the National Environmental Policy Act, or NEPA. Mastard is required to provide documentation looking at a whole suite of environmental impacts, take a thorough look as to how the project is going to impact both the natural and built environments here in Chelsea, as well as the community. This public outreach that we're doing tonight, what we've done in the past, what we'll be doing in the future, the open dialogue, which we are attempting to facilitate, is all going to be documented and that, or all going to be written down and documented in our NEPA document, which will eventually be submitted to the Federal Highway Administration. And ultimately, it is the Federal Highway Administration who will review that document and make the decision whether or not we have complied with the requirements of the National Environmental Policy Act. Other regulations that we can get into, or that I just want to touch upon, the project is also subject to review under Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act, whereas the project determination will be made that there won't be a negative impact on any historic resources in the area, as well as review under Section 4F of the Department of Transportation Act, whereas we are evaluating any potential impacts to public and recreational facilities adjacent to the project area. Public participation, I hope you're starting to understand that we are trying. There is a robust public involvement plan in place that we have been following. We're meeting with the groups, we're sending out notifications, perhaps you've seen us in the community. We've gone door-to-door recently. We have pop-up meetings at the library, at Market Basket, at City Hall here, and so we are out in the community. We will continue to be in the community beyond tonight, beyond tomorrow, beyond advertising of the project, well into construction, and all the way until completion of the project. So please understand that involvement is a priority of ours. Next steps after tonight, the project is approaching, or will be in the final design phase in February. We hope to have the final bid documents, project specs, cost estimate, all that pulled together in March, probably mid-March, late March to early April. We hope to advertise the project. What that means is that's when the project is put out on the street, it is advertised to contractors that this is a project, and they will then bid on that project. And then notice to proceed will then be given to the contractor who's awarded the job in fall of 2018, construction beginning that following winter. So with that, I'm going to hand it back over to Joe, and then we'll soon be getting the fun part of it, the question and answer part of the meeting.
Thanks, Mark. So before we open it up to questions and answers, I want to open it up to any elected officials that are here that would like to speak before we open it up to the general
Good. Thank you. For the record, my name is Roy Avijanether, Councillor-at-Large here in the city of Chelsea. And I want to break up my comments, I don't have questions, but comments into two parts. One, mitigation, and two, on the potential closing of, the permanent closing of the Fifth Street on-ramp. As far as mitigation goes, they're not going to speak here tonight, but they're in the audience. And sitting in the front row is Mr. and Mrs. Jamie Portello, and they are the owners of 65 Fourth Street. Now, just a little while ago, I assisted them in a claim process because of the recent snowing, because of the recent snowstorms. Mastard, as it does, plows the top deck, and during that plowing, the snow that they plowed went over the fencing, onto their building, and broke their windows. Now, the claim process is long, but this is just an example of how close the residential buildings are in Chelsea to the Tobin Bridge. That in fact, snow plowed over like you normally would see in the street just goes directly onto properties in Chelsea. This Tobin Bridge, since it was built in Chelsea, has been nothing but a destructive force to our community. And here is an opportunity for you guys to mitigate this issue. Now, yes, maybe it's about fencing, but that doesn't deal with, another problem that they deal with, which is right in front of their house, is the joist, the joint of the bridge. And every time a car or a truck goes by, that pounding and the rubber, it's vibrations and noise. And from Beacon Street all the way down is heavy traffic noise, and the fact that this community and those homes along those corridors deserve sound mitigation. Whether you want to build a sound wall, or you want to provide soundproofing windows, that should be part of this project. I say this because the rest of us look around the state, and as a former Mastard employee, I know some projects that were done. That soundproofing was done. When Mastard did the Fast 14 project on 93, you, Mastard, went beyond the normal decking process that you are doing right now, and you strengthened the span along Medford so that you could add the weight of the soundproof walls along this square, so that right now, between Stoneham and Medford, you now see soundproofing walls that you see along the corridors. That was an extra cost. You didn't just replace the deck, you went out and reinforced the bridge itself so it can handle the weight of those soundproof walls. That should be considered here, not just the decking, but reinforcement so that possible walls can be considered here to protect the homes and give some peace and quiet that is long-deserved to the residents here. We look at the Tobin Bridge, we look at this viaduct that goes through our corridor, you'll see brand-new buildings, but you're giving us a vanilla project. Anyone wants to go and see a great project? Go to Route 9 in Shrewsbury, the New Burns Bridge. It's a wonderful new bridge, lit up at night. Senator Harriet Chandler fought for that bridge to be a showcase, and right now, 4th of July, they have fireworks all over it. Yet we're going to get vanilla over here. We deserve the same. When I worked for Mastard, I had to drive all the way up to Andover to meet with the city and state senator, and Phillips, the corporation that was located right there next to the highway, because they didn't want a vanilla salt shed depot in their community. They thought the idea of a depot holding salt next to their building or in Andover was going to degrade Andover. Not the fact that we have three mountains of salt over here. No, they were complaining about a little salt shed. And Senator Feingold at the time said, if you're going to do this, I want the Taj Mahal of salt sheds. They got their Taj Mahal. I want Chelsea to get the same. I heard that because this is not federal highway, that the soundproofing doesn't qualify. That's not true. When you guys worked on 128 in Beverly and in Danvers, which is beyond the 95 corridor, they had to put soundproofing walls along there because the residents didn't want to deal with the sound. Asking for that again. We're talking about a little bit of lighting over here under the corridor. Go over to South Boston, go over to South End, and see what kind of, what the underbridge looks over there. That's what we deserve, the same. We're not asking for anything more but the same that the rest of the state gets. And for far too long, state agencies have always given us the worst. And that brings me to the next point. Again, state agencies doing what they want for what's not in the best interest of the city of Chelsea. And I'm talking about now the idea of the closure of the Fifth Street on-ramp. For those of us who have watched this for a while, such as myself, this is not a decision that was made saying, there's not much use here. No. This project and this study was worked backwards. The decision was made that D-CAM wanted that land for surface parking, and that this study did nothing but just work backwards to satisfy that. That's how this worked. You're going to tell me, and I know this because, again, history. Five years ago, working at Mastard, I worked with city manager. We worked on a plan to surplus all the land underneath the bridge to give that use back to the community. Let's fix this scar that is the Tobin Bridge and see if we can get parking for our community. See if we can get open space for our kids. And we had a plan, and it was designed, and we were working forever on a lease project that today they're still working on trying to get the lease. And at the last meeting, open meeting with Mastard, Secretary Highway Timlin was here with him and his officials, we walked the sites. Some city officials, myself, for history, and Timlin. And out of nowhere, at that walk of those sites, where we were talking about what we were going to do, D-CAM shows up and said, oh no, we want the area next to Fifth Street. That was supposed to be a skate park. Charlestown and Cambridge can get a $6 million skate park for their kids, but we have to sacrifice a potential open space for our kids so that state workers bringing in more cars can have, what, I don't know, a few 50 parking spots over there? Meanwhile, they gyp us. They gyp us this way. They are acting as if their office is in the middle of the suburbs, sprawling out every which way. And instead of building, what the state should do is commit and building a garage on the back of that building on Spruce Street, they want to keep on going this way, which it shouldn't be. That's what should happen. And we need, look, we have all city officials, every elected official here is against this. We want to make sure that our state officials are behind us, and I need to have the city manager on board with this to make this something comparable. City manager, you're mayor of Revere, imagine if I told you they wanted to close the Sargent Street off-ramp. You'd be screwed. Your whole West Revere would go uproar because they would now know that the only way they can get onto the Route 1 would be the Route 60 or the Route 16. Close down Sargent Street and tell me what would happen to West Revere. That's what this is about. And to the remark that says, oh, federal highway guidelines tell us that we should only have an on-ramp every X amount. How many off-ramps do you have in the Central lottery? Is that not within breaking those rules? Of course it is. Why? Because it's an urban setting. This is not middle of Iowa. Don't give us those dimensions. We know that in an urban area, you have more exits because there's more traffic. And the traffic, yeah, your traffic study says it'll be all right at the merge point. Yeah, the top of the ramp. But what's going to happen at the bottom of the ramp? It's already backed up to Everett Ave, all the way to CAM beyond that, and on the other side, Broadway, yeah, that's where it's going on. And the little diagrams you showed about they're going to go around Arlington Street, and they're going to go down Fourth, and around, you know, the old fire station? No. That's going to horr- so there's enough traffic just at Dunkin' Donuts. Forget about even putting that over there. You are going to be asking this community, if this was to go forward, to have to redesign, reroute all of its streets to satisfy the parking needs of a building that does not trump our access needs. And I know that the fire department hasn't made, you know, stated anything, but I think an extra access point to a response to anything that goes on the bridge, or to Boston, or to Somerville. Four firefighters died in Back Bay. What would happen if a fire truck got stuck because it didn't respond quick enough? Think about this. Or that the fact that they have to drive all the way now to Carter Street to get access to something on the bridge instead of the Fifth Street, which is right there, one block away. More access is beneficial. No one would ever take an access point away. As a matter of fact, you have communities clamoring over an access point to their city. So those are my points. We need the same mitigation points, the same type of mitigation you offer other communities. We deserve it just as much as they did, and please don't close the Fifth Street off-ramp.
Leo Robinson. I'd like to read something into the record. Here we go, 1950 all over again. That means Chelsea is being put in a situation we don't want to be in. Cars and trucks running through our city, disrupting our way of life once again. What does that mean? Building the bridge dealt a major blow to our way of life by destroying the center of our city and moving housing. This cost the city real estate taxes that would have covered more than your payment in lieu of taxes. Your efforts to close the Fifth Street ramp is unacceptable, as we will be having traffic traveling through our school area, creating a greater risk for our children as well as our residents. My request would be not to close the Fifth Street ramp, work with Chelsea's elected officials to come up with a Work with Chelsea's elected officials to come up with a better solution. And money is not the answer, but the city should be in line for an increase for what we receive from you for all our pain and suffering.
Damali Vido. I was very clear last week about how I felt about you guys, and I'm going to try to keep it clean this time because we're live. First and foremost, when you say you do extensive outreach, we've got to do a little better about the flyers that are sticking on random polls. It's really dark. You can't really read what the meeting's about. I mean, for the sake of transparency, I think we just need to be better about that, and that's number one. The fact that DOT committed to a parking lot for the MITC building before you even thought about gauging the reaction from my community is very telling of the lack of disregard, the lack of regard that you have for our community. I'm really just tired of being the redheaded stepchildren of Massachusetts. People want to come here and they want to rebuild this and develop. You see there's money here, you want to come, but you just want to shit on us because we're a low-income community, and I'm tired. I'm just tired. We have, I said I was going to keep it clean. Okay, 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 sorry. I'm glad that the department has chosen to back off from the closure of the off-street ramp. But if you are backing up and it's saying that the final plans will be done next month, how will that affect the timeline? Does that mean that the final plans won't be happening in February? Because I'll tell you that there's 100% opposition to it. I've spoken, I know that the fire department, as my colleague said, has not issued a public statement. I've spoken with a number of firemen who are worried about the threat that this is going to pose for them to get around to respond to emergencies. That's a huge issue. You know, in theory, looking at the space in between the ramps and determining how we reconstruct our city is, and proposed traffic detours makes it very clear that it's a very naive and bird's-eye view of like a little picture. It's clear that whoever did this has no idea of what the unique traffic patterns of Chelsea. I mean, again, I told you, with all due respect to your cute suits and your degrees and whatnot, you really have to listen to the experts of this community, which are our residents. We know. We know because we live here. We know because we're in the traffic. I'm a mom. I have to bring my daughter to school every morning. The proposed two-way on Fifth Ave, that's a shit show. We all know it's a shit show. I mean, it just doesn't make, it doesn't make any sense. And with all due respect, I know, I know, I'm not keeping it clean, but I can't help it. With all due respect to our city manager, I was very concerned when I saw project team and at the bottom it said "City of Chelsea" as the coordinator because I'm not coordinating a damn thing. I don't know who's included in that. But how do you include the city of Chelsea as part of your project team without considering the elected officials that represent the constituency and the constituents saying, "No"? It just, it doesn't make much sense to me. I want to echo everything my colleague said before me. No to the Fifth Street off-ramp. It's time that we put the lives and the safety of our residents first. Thank you. D.A., M. like Michael, A.L.I., last name is V. like Victor, I.D. like Doctor, O.T. like
Thank you. Luis de Halla, District 2, Soldiers Home. So I'm not going to reiterate everything that's been said. I think that my colleagues have done a fantastic job at making the points. You know, there's one thing about Chelsea that's interesting. We have very specific needs and concerns. And the fact that the road and control isn't part of something being mentioned here just goes to show that you're not thoroughly listening. With regards to the fact that we have three ramps and you have 4,001, 6,000 and another and 1,600 in the Arlington Street ramp, that should tell you, that's 1,600. It's like a pressure cooker, right? You need to relieve some valve, and that's what that Arlington Street ramp is for. We don't want that closed. There's no real reason to have that closed. I mean, the proposed green space and everything underneath the major highways, a little bit of an interesting concept, you know? So it just, you know, and what Roy mentioned earlier as far as windows and soundproofing, oh my gosh, you know what? I just sold a three-family right there in the corner where the viaduct starts with the, on William Street. And you could throw a rock to a car. That's how close the properties are to that bridge. So the soundproofing in that is definitely needed. Road and control is something that needs to be in your program. No to the Arlington Street closing. It's really important. You know, and something was said about safety concern as far as going into the bridge. We are New Englanders people, and one thing we know, right? We're really the only area that has what? Rotaries. Not too many people around the country know how to manipulate a rotary, you know? It's very true. And you know what? So that means that you know how to drive. So if you can manipulate a rotary, you can merge, right? Merging is not such a big deal. So getting rid of that Arlington Street ramp, it's not in the cards. You need to look and meet with some of us in a more closer fashion and kind of come up with a better plan. And you know what? Here's the thing about the project, guys. Pretend you live here, okay? Pretend you live here, and you'll be able to come up with a better product.
Thank you. I'll be very brief. My name is Calvin T. Brown. I'm a city councilor in District 7. I mean, District 8. Used to, I used to represent District 7. District 8, and I represent a vast majority of the discussion that we're talking about here. Again, I will not continue with what my councilor brothers and sisters said, but I heard in your comments that you've met with community groups and you've been out doing outreach. I was elected on November 7th. That's why I had 7 in my mind. I wanted to make sure I said that. I was elected on November 7th, and to this day, I am not aware of any request of you DOT to meet with the city council members and the elected officials here. I looked at your display here today. I looked at all what you showed here. I was surprised that you didn't have more out there where I can actually pick it out and respond back to it. But I also heard a lot that you said. I asked that you hold off on that February 18th date, which is your start date of this program, to you have met with the city council members here, heard our demands, and also addressed our concerns, our concerns, our residents' concerns. And I ask before you go forward in February 18, 2018, that you request a meeting with the Chelsea City Council.
Good evening. My name is Giovanni Recupero, and I'm also a city councilor. I only have a few questions. One question is, this project is going to go through no matter what because that's what it does. The next question I have is, how does this project impact the life of the people that live here through traffic? Did you do a study? Do you have one that can tell us how it does impact the people? Because those are the ones that are going to suffer. The cars are going to come down and there's no way to move. So that's the main thing. That's all I would like to say is it impacts the life of the people.
Are there any other elected officials that want to speak before we open it up to So if you're going to speak, I'm going to ask Nathaniel Cabral, who works for Howardstein Hudson. He's going to help with the logistics out there. Please state your name for the record and please spell your name for the record. Before we open it up, I just wanted to address a couple of points that some of the city councils brought up. Regarding the owners that had the snow thrown on their home, we are going to be installing a snow fence where we can to address that issue, specifically your location will be part of the project. So we have been made aware of that particular situation, and we're going to address that as part of this project. Road and control, we are going to have baiting specifications for road and control in the contract. May not have been mentioned here in the PowerPoint presentation, but those are standard specifications that we include in these projects. I believe our district office has been working with the city manager's office on occasions where they need some road and control, so that's been ongoing.
Absolutely. As far as the request to meet with city councils, absolutely, we will do that following this meeting. We will be meeting with the city councils, or at least request meeting with the city councils. Finally, just one comment. The DCAM parking was not the reason that we looked at the ramp closure. That was strictly based on traffic volumes. The commitment for the parking was made well before I was ever assigned to this project. So I wanted to state that for the record. So if anybody would like to speak, please step up. We are going to limit with the number of people here to two minutes per person. You can come back and speak a second time, but I want to give everybody an opportunity to speak tonight.
Joe, before we crank that open for everybody, I have had a request. I have had a request from translator that is working in the back providing simultaneous translation to, when you get up there, just kind of keep your pacing, kind of, you know, steady, just so that he is able to provide that for folks who are listening on the headset. The only other thing I would say is it looks like some of the standing room-only crowd is draining off, but as folks get up to speak, please be respectful of folks who have been standing since this meeting started. With that, go to it.
My name's Jason, J.S.O.N. My last name is Bonetti, B.O.N.E.T.T.I. Quick statement, I live six houses deep on Beacon Street. I could put my hand on the wall and tell you when an 18-wheeler goes over that bridge, every time. Second thing, are you telling me this entire bridge was painted with lead paint?
Yes.
So you're telling me every time I walk my dog, I don't see a speck of paint on that bridge anymore? Where is all the lead?
It's in the ground.
In my dog? Like, what? I walk under that bridge every single day, and there are chunks of steel on the ground covered in that green paint. If this entire bridge is covered in lead paint, I do construction, negative pressure system is great when you're chipping off the paint, but the paint's gone. Is there anything that we're going to do retroactive to get?
We're going to be replacing the entire superstructure. All the steel gets replaced and all the columns get fully encased. There'll be no lead paint when we're done with this project.
The lead paint's gone. I don't see any paint in that picture right there.
Your comment's noted. Thank you.
Hi, Diane Galboni. Diane with one N because I'm on a diet. Galboni, G.H.A.L., B. as in boy, O.U.N.I. I live on Addison Street. Back of my house is on Blossom Street, across from One North. You close that ramp, that traffic's going to come all the way down from around. I'm not, I don't have the direction gene, but I know it's going to be terrible there and with all the kids and everything like that. I went to the meetings on One North of Boston. Shake your hand, everybody's smiling, fresh coffee, donuts. Oh, yeah, yeah, there'll be plenty of parking. There's no parking for my tenants on Blossom Street. We miscalculated. Geez, thanks a lot. You're supposed to use pet-friendly ice salt on the streets. Oh, that's expensive. So now everyone across the street's complaining their dogs have paws that are burning up. So everything they say, once they get it, it's like it goes back on it. They never put the water down. I had dust in my house. You could write your name on the TV screen after you wiped it off. I'm about, what, four houses down on Blossom Street, the back of my house? I've never seen anybody. No one's talked to me about this. Blossom Street's going to be a mess with traffic. So is in Addison Street. And they got two crosswalks on Carter Street. And where's this parking lot going to be? Where they were supposed to put the dog park to make everybody happy because they allow pets on One North of Boston, up to two? Now you've got all these dogs. I have three dogs. I walk them every day, all around Chelsea. The dog mess around there is terrible, terrible. And nobody has anywhere to go. You can't go to that ball field. You're not supposed to take your dogs there. The tracks, so there's supposed to be some kind of park. So I think that's where they're going to be parking now. I think they got to do a lot of more work and talk to a lot more people. And, you know, they were supposed to put up dust things at One North. You know, I have breathing problems. I'm an old lady now, you know? I get those aches in pain. The boom sprayed oil on my shed and on the house next door. That was a big mess. Yeah, there's going to be problems. I know that. There's going to be congestion, there's going to be noise. But they make too many promises and then they don't do them, and we're the ones that suffer. I mean, I do have to get out every day. And with all that traffic on Blossom Street, then the opposite way coming down Addison, all of us are going to have a lot of problems, a lot of problems. That's all.
Thank you.
My name is Lynn Mesa. I own a house on Clyde Street with my husband. We've owned the house now for 23 years. I've lived in this community for 43 years. I'll probably die in this city. And somebody said to me this morning that war has been declared on the people of this city. How dare you not consult our city councilors before you make decisions? How dare you? And my concern is not for old people like me, it's for our children. Our children have already been poisoned with lead. Our children already have asthma more than I think any other city in the state, or at least one of the highest because of contamination. What are you going to do to protect our children? What are you going to do to show your respect for our city council?
Good evening. My name is Rick Gopin, G.O.P.E.N. I'm a property owner. My concern is with all of the construction and demolition work that's going on, the physical impact that might have on all of our homes and our buildings in terms of all of the vibration that might be going on during this work, what impact that might have, whether it be stress fractures in our buildings. So specifically, what safeguards have you thought of or formulated so that we have a baseline that we know what the condition of all of our properties are before all of this demolition takes place? And then what type of monitoring activity are you going to do during the construction so that if something does happen to any of our buildings, that we have a right to file a grievance? And, you know, what type of things have you, I guess, done so that our properties are safeguarded?
That's a good question. We are looking at taking areas that are, buildings and homes that are really close to the bridge that may be impacted during construction. We are going to put specifications for pre-monitoring and post-monitoring of those structures. So if one of your properties, one of the ones impacted, we will be reaching out to monitor your home or building.
Maureen Colley, I'm a resident of Chelsea, and I'm just sick and tired of being sick and tired of dealing with Mastard, the electric company, the MBTA. You invite us because you're obligated to do so by law to voice our concerns, but you don't listen. You are here to force your agenda down our throats, to sell, I'm looking for a clean word, a bunch of horse hockey down our throats. And guess what? I'm not buying what you're selling. And I know that my neighbors aren't either. You have just wrecked my life with this whole thing. I live right next to the Tobin Bridge. So now, after last summer where I didn't have any sleep because of the planes flying over all night long, where you could see their eyes, their eyes, that's how close they are. They fly below the roof of my building. I live on the fifth floor in public housing with windows that you all chose the last time you did this craziness not to give us the replacement windows. So I was walking around all last summer. I wasn't safe to be loose on four and five hours of sleep. Now you're going to be lighting up the world, working at night, sawing through concrete and the rest of it. Let me just address one small point. And the other thing is, I take the 111 into Boston. And the other thing is, I take the 111 into Boston. So I go from Arlington Street. Now you're going to get rid of that entirely and send us over to Everett. I would encourage you to do two things regarding Everett Avenue. Start at 3:30 on any weekday afternoon, or try it on Friday. Try driving from Broadway in Chelsea up to Route 16. It will take you more than 45 minutes, and I would like you to wait with me, we'll make a date, on Everett Avenue, right in front of the Dunkin' Donuts, to ride the 112 bus going toward Wellington. I waited more than an hour a month ago. Then I waited an hour and a half, three weeks ago. And last week, I waited almost two hours, not because the MBTA is a failure in that regard, but because they can't move, it's a parking lot. Now you're talking about closing down Fifth Street, Arlington, and moving it over to Everett Avenue. That's not, excuse me, that's not going to work. And, and, and the fire department pointed out this afternoon on social media that because that's such a parking lot, they use that ramp on Everett Avenue in order to deliver lifesaving services. So your plans stink. It absolutely stinks. That's all I've got.
Christian Calvo, 91 Sixth Street. That's between Arlington and Spruce. So I live right in front of that parking lot right there. You know, I'm glad you're doing something now. My kids have all learned how to ride bicycle there. We roller skated there until recently, when security is saying we cannot longer use that space, for whatever reason, on the weekends, because it's completely empty, but we can't use that space. To, it's even sad, we even play hide and seek in there, so the kids will get into those little columns. So we know the space well. Between Spruce and Arlington. Underneath the bridge. The one you have plenty of pictures of. There's a ton of pictures of it. And, you know, I'm glad you're doing something because the chips, the paint chips that you see there all the time, you know, it's there, they're just there, and nobody's cleaning that up or anything. So I'm glad you're doing something, better late than never. We do have a lot of problems there. There's, the major thing, and I addressed this years ago, when, when, when two people died in a matter of 12 months, coming off that part of the bridge with the curvies. And I asked for the city manager at the time to, to request a fence, some kind of barrier so people stop flying off and landing right on Sixth Street. I mean, that's a really busy area. During the day, a lot of the high school kids come in and are walking back and forth on that street. So that, as a request, I'm hoping that's part of your, your plans to have some kind of fence, some kind of barrier there. The other thing is, there's been a lot of, a lot of construction in that area. And we've had, this is, you know, something for the city to address, or something for Mass DOT to help the city, with some kind of training for the police officers that are there. It's, it's always, you know, it's always getting blocked off. And for the most part, most of the officers on detail are great. But every once in a while, we have an officer that is just rude, or is having a bad day. The other day, there's a police officer parked in front of my driveway, and, you know, I put my blinker on to, that I'm going in there, and she drops, drops an F-bomb. She's just like, I don't need that. I mean, why should I have to deal with anxiety that I have to deal with the police to get into my, that street, that street right there? So, you know, there's some kind of training, but you greatly appreciate some kind of conversation, some kind of contact. When things that you're saying, the plan on paper always sounds great, what really happens on the ground is something different. So if we can contact somebody and say, this is not happening, that is not happening, you know, so-and-so I'm having a problem with so-and-so, whatever the deal is, it'd be great. So we're having all that activity there, and we just feel like there's, there's a lot of, a lot going on, we just don't have enough communication back and forth. So if we can make sure to have that, that'd be great. And then, sound. There's a lot of, what are the, what are the hours you're thinking about doing on the weekends from throughout the night? And we were, you know, people go to work, people are trying to fall asleep in the evening. And, I mean, when you did the Route 1 right there, the repavement, it was a nightmare. I mean, it was all night, all night long. And that's just incredible that, that nobody even pays attention to say, you know, what's going on with the people that live here? Do we care? You know what I mean? That's just incredible, nobody pays attention to that. And even to the point where the Arlington Street, the Fifth Street on-ramp, when there was work going on there, we could hear it on Sixth Street. So that area right there between Arlington and Spruce, those residents, those owners, everybody that's lived there has had gone through the last three years a lot. Even with the, with the snow, when the snow is being piled up there, 11, 12 o'clock at night with the front loader, and it's just getting, the blade is getting dropped over and over and over again. So part of it I'm sure is the city, part of it is Mass DOT, but since, you know, you have a moment here, thank you.
Thank you. Just one thing I want to address, as far as the, you mentioned vehicles coming off the viaduct. We are upgrading all the barriers on the viaduct as part of this project. So they will be taller, they'll meet the newest standards. So we are addressing that. I just want to remind everybody, try to keep it, I know I said two minutes earlier, which isn't going to work, but if we could try to keep it to like five minutes, that'd be, and then you can come back around, and we'll let you speak again.
I do, I'm sorry, before you start, sir. I do just want to address the comment that, that you made, sir, that, that we're not listening, or we don't care. We absolutely do, and that's why we're here, number one. There was a lot of revisions and made into the technical way, in engineering, that this project is being designed, and that it's going to be delivered. I said this the other night in front of an organization. You know, this was, if this was a traditional construction project, the noise, the impacts, the construction, the duration of the construction shoes being out there would be years, not months. And so we are attempting to minimize our presence here and the impacts to the community to the maximum extent. So I just want to assure you that we are indeed listening and are aware of the context in which we are located. That's it. Yes. Understood. Thank you. And that is what the hotline will be for, if you're up.
My name's John Valanche. I live at 13 Cheever Street here in Chelsea. First, I just want to thank, like, the community for coming out. It's really awesome to see everyone out here. Unfortunately, it happens to be in such a time where, yet again, a state agency is kind of disregarding community input. I'd like to start by just making a comment on the presentation. The second segment of it was focusing on metrics to understand the average delay that individuals experience between Route 16 and the Charlestown Bridge. I think many of you who take the 111 every day were probably shocked to see that it only takes us 10 to 15 minutes to get over that bridge. And I just want to make a point, and it's a technical point, but the metric used there was an average as opposed to a median. Now, for anyone, I mean, someone who's writing this report and who reviewed that report, I would suspect that you would probably think to use a median, which would actually more accurately reflect the time that it takes for people to get across that bridge, not trying to absorb the high and low end travel times. And that's effectively what you did, and then segmented, you know, the other piece of the trip time up at the top like it was arbitrary. So that's, that's just a start. In terms of environmental issues, I think a lot of people have really kind of touched on a number of the important ones. But I'd like to reiterate that the agency should either hire an independent licensed site professional that's going to monitor the issues related to taking care of the lead in that bridge. And if the agency isn't willing to hire an independent licensed contractor, they should pay money equal to the city to hire one of our own, so that we can be sure that what's going on isn't further adding to the, you know, negative consequences of this trip, of this project, rather. More importantly, I think, for individuals who already spoke who live under the viaduct, it's not just a question of what's going to happen, it's what's already happened. It's a question about public health, it's a question about asthma, it's a question about cancer. I think that the agency should also pay the city or conduct the work itself and undertake the project to clean up under that bridge, clean that soil, replace that soil, take care of that. This is, you know, at the end of the day, your project, and all of this is a result of the work of the agency. In terms of community impact, I think that the agency needs to demonstrate better due diligence by hiring a community organizer to engage with the residents immediately impacted around the viaduct and bridge. This includes homeless people. This has been a topic, a segment of the population, that has been unaddressed so far in any of the comment periods here, and I find that, I find that a grave injustice to those individuals. The agency should reach out, identify the needs of, and relocate and accommodate those individuals while you undertake this work. In addition, I think, to actually hold you to the project guidelines that you seem to be so confident of, you should pay a fee to the city for each day that these contractors hired to do this work extend their work, and that money should be at the city's discretion. In addition to noise, Lynn Mesa, Maureen Colley already talked about and highlighted kind of comments around trauma. At the meeting last week at Green Roots, people were talking about feeling as though they were in a war zone, and I don't think this can be understated. I think the level of noise, the impact of noise that, that influences this community is real, and you really need to take that into account. We actually have people coming from war-torn regions, and, and, you know, you're, you're doing a type of work that is exceeding anywhere near normal decibel levels at night. You know, you have children that can't go to sleep, they're underperforming at school, you have parents who can't get enough sleep in between their second and third jobs. This is a real impact in the community. So I'd like to reiterate that noise walls were discussed at Green Roots, and I thought it was actually rather interesting, because someone told me that the reason why we wouldn't have noise walls either temporarily or permanently is because the agency doesn't want to set a precedent, that that's what you're supposed to do. Well, you know, here's the thing. You should do that. You should demonstrate your due diligence. You should implement those noise walls, not only for the duration of the project, but for the life of the viaduct. I think it's, I mean, we've had residents who live there, and they know that better, and they've spoken to that, and I think you just need to take that to heart and get to work on that. Finally, I'd just like to say, another issue that's really been underplayed in this presentation and at the presentation at Green Roots, is the actual impact to transit riders. Those are folks on the 111, the 116, the 117. And so I'd like to reiterate a demand that's been made previously, but maybe new to folks here in the audience, that the agency, for the duration of this trip, should provide Chelsea residents free bus, subway, and Zone 1A passes to determine how to get into the city in the most efficient manner for those individuals. I want to add just one more thing to that, and this is specific to the 111 as it goes over the Tobin Bridge every day. Highlighting that discrepancy in the average versus median time that it takes you to get from Route 16 to the Charlestown Bridge. I guess our friend from the MBTA isn't here. But at Green Roots last week, we were quoted that this would add an average of 40 minutes to the trip. You know, just, just think about that, right? And if that's the quote that's being thrown around, okay? Just think about the actual lived reality, right? I mean, I was trying to catch a bus on the 111 and during, well, it was just after the rush hour, and there's a 40-minute headway, okay? The individual from the MBTA was also talking about worker shortages. I mean, Mast dot has done little, nothing, to assure us that, both in terms of mitigation money and assuring the individuals to depend on public transit to get to their second, third, fourth jobs, et cetera, are adequately going to be covered by this. And I want to just finally underscore all of this by saying, we're in an environmental justice community with a majority, community of people of color and low-income people of color. These individuals that live in the city, that work in the city, that put into the city every day, that are raising their families here, cannot afford an extra 40 minutes on the bus. They can't afford to be 40 minutes late to work. They can't afford it, okay? Do better. Thanks.
Thank you, John. I think I want to address a couple of comments that you made. Site professional, we are including that in our contract. We will have an independent site professional. We talked about that at, at the meeting, and that is something that we can provide the results as they come in and make that public. We do also have specifications for contaminated soils, so anything within the project limits that we encounter, it will be disposed of and taken off-site, outside of Chelsea. As far as hiring a community organizer, we are going to have staff on-site during construction. If a community wants to have a point person to coordinate with Mast dot, whether it's a, a city employee or somebody from one of the community organizations, we'll be happy to accommodate that. But we don't hire community organizers and pay for that as part of our projects. We will have staff available. We're going to have 24-hour hotlines in both English and Spanish, and we're going to be very responsive during construction.
So, good afternoon, good evening, sir. My name is Nathaniel Curtis. I run the Public Involvement Group at Howard Stein Hudson. I have a planning degree, and I have been doing facilitation work in meetings like this with Mast dot. It will be a decade in August. So we do meetings, we do pop-up meetings, we've done outreach for this project. I've done outreach with Mast dot and with Joe across the state. So while I can't guarantee that I would be here during construction, there are specialist firms that deal with outreach processes and work directly with Mast dot to deal with this stuff. A good example of one that you can actually look at in construction is what's been done with the Arbor Way in Forest Hills. So you can look at that, and you can see what gets done. But yes, there will be somebody who does that during construction, and will work directly with Mast dot and the general contractor to reach out to you, so.
I also wanted to reference the MBTA question that was raised. That's an important one, critical one. I'm sorry? Sure. My name is John Lozada. I work in the Office of Diversity and Civil Rights, and my responsibility has to do with all kinds of public-facing nondiscrimination in any, in any of the programs that we work on because of state money or federal money. There's an MBTA person here tonight from the Service Planning Office. At the Collaborativa meeting, there was a deputy to the chief operating officer who was present, as well as a person who's in charge of the Blue Line, not because of the Blue Line focus, but she's also Latina and sensitive to the issues with respect to the 111 bus, because she runs stuff out of Maverick. They're trying to figure out, they've, they've got a list of everything that people were concerned about that was referenced at the Green Roots and other meetings, and they're working with those to now come up with concepts to sort of support and make sure we can mitigate the issues around transit.
I just want to add to that. So we've heard a lot of concerns about busing issues in Chelsea and even beyond Chelsea. This project, this project is going to have an insignificant impact on the Bus 111 route. The, the overall, all the projects that Mass DOT has as a whole, we understand, we need to talk about those and coordinate those. We've been working with the T to meet with the organizations and to address those issues. This particular project, which is why we're here tonight, will not have a significant impact on Bus 111. I understand that, and I'm not suggesting we talk about it in a vacuum. I just want to clarify the distinction between the two. That's all I'm saying. Go ahead.
Hi, Maria Belen Power, 13 Admirals Way. Maria Belen Power, 13 Admirals Way. I'm the Associate Director of Green Roots in Chelsea, and we had a great meeting last week, and we're happy to see a lot of people here. We submitted letter, a letter with comments. I'm not going to go through the whole thing, but one important point is that there are a bunch of projects happening in Chelsea. This is not the only one, and this is not the only DOT one. We have the North Washington Street Bridge, that's affecting traffic, especially on the 111. We have the Tobin Rehab. We have the Tobin Viaduct Project, which is this one. We have the EverSource Electrical Transmission Lines, the proposal. We have the Chelsea Clock Development. We have the Chelsea Clock Development. We have, and, and I, and I know this is not your project, but it affects residents, it affects traffic, and it affects public transit. We have the hotel developments, we have the Beecham Street redesign and redevelopment project. And on top of that, we have two bridges that go up at random times of the day, every time. So we're concerned about the project, but we also are concerned about the schools and the parks right around the bridge. The Williams School, Chelsea High, Carter Street Park, Chelsea Stadium, Anita's Place, Williams School, KM Park, O'Neill Todd Lot, Mystic Overlook. All of our parks are going to be affected by this construction project and by all of the construction projects that are happening. We're concerned about noise, dust, light, lead. There is a bunch of environmental concerns that are, that we're concerned about around the Route 1, but around all residents and the entire city of Chelsea. We are opposed to the closing the Fifth Street ramp. The city needs more access to Route 1, not less. We would like to see residents of Chelsea, like John mentioned, have free access to the MBTA during the construction period. We would like free access to the tunnels, to the East Boston tunnels, for those who drive. And we would like all of the land under the DOT bridge and under all of the DOT land in Chelsea given back to the city. The community of Chelsea has for too long carried the industrial and environmental burden for the entire region. Addressing all of these concerns and demands is the least that the DOT can do for Chelsea.
Thank you, Maria. And one thing I wanted to just mention that I meant to mention earlier, we did receive that letter. We are going to be including that as part of the transcript, which will be posted on the website. So thank you for your comments. Yes, sir.
My name's David Cherick, and I'd like to bring some historical perspective to this meeting, this project, and as well as to the Tobin Reconstruction Project that's going on. What we're redoing here, what, what this regional agencies did to Chelsea, the state did to Chelsea 70 years ago. 70 years ago, there was a bridge that crossed the Mystic that connected Chelsea Square to City Square and Charlestown. A similar bridge should be built today, and the Tobin Bridge should go away, the viaduct should go away, knit Chelsea back together. On North Washington Street in Boston, between Charlestown and the North End, there's a new bridge that's going to be built there. The new bridge is going to have sidewalk, it's going to have a bus, bus, dedicated bus lane, it's going to have a bike path. It would be humane, would be humane if people were to be able to walk from Chelsea Square to City Square to the North End, as it was years ago. If someone goes to the archives of the Boston Globe, goes across the street to the Public Library, there's a folder in the archives of the Public Library, that, there's a folder several inches thick that talks about what happened in 1950 when people were protesting out in the street in Chelsea. Homes were taken, homes were moved, people were displaced. It was an inhumane process then, and this is an inhumane process now. Chelsea would be a much better situation, and you can look, there were instances where transportation's being removed elsewhere in the country. Just go across to Boston where the Central Adri came down and the road went underground, and it made a big improvement in, in the life of downtown Boston. I've spoken with former State Secretary of Transportation Fred Salvucci, who became famous for developing the Big Dig in Boston and getting the highway put underground. He's still teaching at MIT, and I spoke with him, he tells me he wanted to remove the bridge as early as 1978. I go back into the mid-'70s, I was working in this building, I was working in the mayor's office, the Office of Community Development here. I was working on a master's thesis where it talked about the social, environmental, economic impacts of the Tobin Bridge on the city of Chelsea, and none of it was good, and none of it is good today. I want to know where Mass DOT was two years ago, five years ago. You know, drop this project on the city of Chelsea, you're required because of the federal funding on the viaduct to have these public meetings, but you're accelerating the project. This should all be slowed down. If, if, if we're, if we're up to me, and I'm not in a position to do this, but it could be Chelsea Green Roots, it could be the Chelsea Collaborative, it could be the city government, the city council, city manager, to seek an injunction or a temporary restraining order to just slow this project down, just stop the project. Chelsea needs, and the whole North Shore, needs a comprehensive transportation plan because what, what you're doing is spending tens of millions of dollars in Chelsea but doing nothing for Chelsea. Tens, tens of millions of dollars. Chelsea, Chelsea has suffered for 70 years now. You have people coming from Saugus, Linfield, Peabody, they drive through Chelsea on their way to Boston. They spit on Chelsea on the way through. They don't care, they don't care about Chelsea because they're just looking to get into Boston. Chelsea is, is suffering the impacts, and it's an environmental inequity situation. And I've, I've spoken with people at the Conservation Law Foundation, this is the type of thing that they deal with, and I maintain that if the city or Green Roots or Collaborative were to seek the assistance of the Conservation Law Foundation and file for restraining order or injunctions, they could get it and force the state into doing proper planning. This is not proper planning. Here's the project, this is what we're going to do. You're putting perfume on a pig. That's, that's, you're just putting perfume on a pig. This is, it's, it's inhumane, you're wasting lots of money. As Fred Salvucci stated, he wanted to tear it down in 1978, but, you know, Chelsea didn't have the political clout to do it at that point, still doesn't have the political clout to do it. I maintain if Chelsea were a neighborhood of Boston, if, if this was Charlestown, for example, you have the clout of the mayor's office in Boston, years ago, Mayor Kevin White in Boston would throw things against the wall in his office at City Hall and point to Fred Salvucci, who worked there as a transportation planner, saying, "I want that damn highway gone." And it took a lot of work to get it done, but ultimately, the highway went away. You have acres and acres of land, some of it for development, some of it would provide opportunity for a new, new affordable housing, some would provide opportunity for green space. You would do away with the, the vibration of all these cars that are coming through. Now, where are these people from Saugus, Linfield, Peabody, what are they going to do? I really don't give a damn. I mean, it's a problem in the whole North Shore, it's, it's a regional problem where commuter rail is inadequate. There should be better ways for people to get from Saugus, Linfield, Peabody into Boston and not be traveling, one person to a car to get into Boston. We're putting burden on the Chelsea Fire Department, on the Chelsea Police Department to respond to accidents and other activities that go on on this viaduct and on the bridge. I just, I say, slow the project down, and Chelsea has the power to do that, whether it be the city or Green Roots or the Collaborative. You know, I don't, I don't live in Chelsea now, but I go back to, in the, in 1950s, my grandmother lived in a house on Fifth Street, and the house was taken by eminent domain to provide for that Fifth Street ramp. I mean, that's, that's just one example. I've talked to a number of people that lived on Walnut Street that lost their homes because, because of the bridge and the viaduct.
David, I'm, I'm going to have to cut you short. We've got other people that want to speak, you're twice the longest speaker. I'll let you come back and speak.
Let me just say one closing thought here. I was a little late getting here tonight because parking is very difficult to come into, into Chelsea City Hall. The, the, the auditorium here is too small, there's no parking, parking is very difficult here. Maybe it should be, an evening, next meeting should be an evening meeting, maybe at the auditorium at the high school, you have parking there. You would have probably two times as many people, five times as many people, and you'd be really hearing from the community. I'll have a lot more to say at some point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Courtney Hickson, 19 Medford Street. Long time no see, guys. So I just wanted to kind of reiterate a few things. The closing of the Fifth Street ramp is a little bit of a concern, especially with our fire and our first responders. I didn't realize that you guys hadn't really consulted with them on how it might impact those first responders, so I would definitely encourage you to do that. We sort of touched on this briefly about the 111, but I, I want to reiterate the fact that it, it's, they said last week that it takes about 30 minutes to go end-to-end. They're anticipating it taking an hour and 10 minutes to go end-to-end. When you guys are doing the construction early in the morning, which is something that I've brought up a couple of times, that you need to be thoughtful about how Chelsea's commuting hours are not the same as everyone else's. I'm standing at the Everett Street bus stop at 5:00 in the morning, and that bus is so full already that people are flying past, so if we can't get on that bus, and now you're having construction delays because they are, you know, they're running behind with closing it, that's going to make that take even longer. So I really do want to encourage you guys to be a little bit more thoughtful with what your construction hours are, to make sure that you're actually done by 5:00 AM, because as half this room knows, I'm up before the sun, so I'm there seeing and experiencing this, and I can tell you that it's, you know, that to take that long to get across the bridge at 5:00, 6:00 in the morning is ridiculous. So if you're going to have additional construction delays, that is something you need to consider. And I also think you need to consider how all of this is going to impact, not just the immediate roads behind it, but how this goes into Williams Street. This morning, the Williams Street Bridge was up, and then a truck was making a right-hand turn, and it turned into a huge traffic disaster, and I was 15, 45 minutes late to work this morning because of one situation.
Meridian Street Bridge?
Meridian, the first bridge.
Not blue?
No. Meridian Street Bridge. It's Meridian. Shut it. Yeah, and I, and I do understand that, you know, they're subject to maritime laws, but there's something that you can, you can kind of incorporate with whether or not it's set up a set time where during construction, the bridge only opens at 7:30 in the morning. You can also consider maybe incorporating a ferry from Admiral's Hill or in that general area to downtown Boston, because I think that might be one way to alleviate a lot of traffic concerns. I know I would take a ferry, you know, something along those lines, so, that's it.
Thank you for your comment. I just want to address two quick points. The, you know, being off the road by 5:00 AM, that is extremely, that's going to be very strict on our end. 5:00 AM, they're not just shutting down construction, they are completely off the road. Traffic is already at three lanes at that point, so they will be penalized heavily for any minute that goes over 5:00 AM. So I can assure you that we're as concerned about that as you are. As far as the bridges, we have no control over the opening and closing of the bridges, so I just want to state that for the record. That's US Coast Guard, and...
Your call of the bridge and your being thoughtful about the impact of the rebuild of the traffic plan and how those trucks and that part, I'm not talking like, oh, a Ford F-50, I'm talking a 18-wheeler truck that was making this right-hand turn and all of the car moves. So it's not just, you know, I get that, it's not the bridge opening, it's all the trucks that use that for.
Thank you, understood.
Hi, my name is Alexandria Christmas, I live at 67 Cook Ave. I'm really concerned about the street, the ramp closing. I know I've stated this on last week, but I just wanted to just share again. During your study, one of the things I want you guys to consider is the school traffic around there. School buses, not only for our own district but for others, other schools. There's not only our Williams Schools, there's the high school, but also Excel, and then there's also our neighboring schools that goes to and from, from East Boston, and they use that Everett Ave route. So, one of the things I noticed in your study is that you've noticed that there's a high volume of the Everett Ave ramp and less in the Arlington. I would think that you would just reverse your thinking and say, maybe we could divert some of that traffic to the Arlington Street ramp to lessen the traffic on the Everett Ave ramp. I think that will help the city and also increase the, the usage of the Arlington Street ramp. I understand the viaduct is needed, I read through your proposal for the project, and I really do appreciate you working with the community. One of the things I was thinking as a solution or a suggestion is to increase the buses. I know that you do not deal with the MBTA, but you do, it's part of your project plan. Does school kids use it, and I know my kids do, from between 6:00 to 8:00 AM? It would benefit if they have a shuttle bus between Woodland and Cary to where most of the school, like Clark Ave, and then they could even walk to Williams. So, those are stops. So the Woodland is the end of the stop of Route 111 going towards Chelsea, and then Cary Square, or not even Cary Square, to Bellican Square, I would suggest, because that's where they could go to Clark or they could go to the Williams School, which is two schools in one. That just handles just the city of Chelsea, so not even talking about getting out of Chelsea. And then you have another bus that goes from Bellican Square to out of Chelsea, to Boston. That may help, okay? Closing that ramp is definitely going to bottleneck us. I understand what your study is stating, but I totally disagree, and I believe you're hearing that we all disagree on this. One of the other things I did notice is that you're going to offer police detail, it wasn't defined whether it's going to be state or city. If it is going to be city, my only thought is money going to be diverted to the city to help with our police force or even our first responders. Because right now, even now, I see the police helping and assisting with the crossing guards during the school hours in the morning and the afternoon, but if this is going to happen with the construction and closing of the ramp, temporary or permanent, we are going to need that increase with the police. We're going to need their assistance. And the last thought I saw was that the construction hours between 7:00 PM to 6:00 AM, but I think you mentioned 5:00 AM, can we make it even later to 8:00 or even 9:00 PM? I don't know, that's just one of my other thoughts, that's it.
Hi, my name is Rich Decaro. It's... Hi, Rich Decaro, it's D-E-C-A-R-E-A-U. If you wouldn't mind, would you mind going back to the last slide, please? And while we're waiting, I'd like to obviously reiterate what a lot of people have said here. The 111 bus, I'd like to, to know if, I know a lot of people who work for MITC, and I'd like to know if they realize that the closure of this ramp is happening or potentially happening. And a lot of those folks take the, there's a stop on Arlington and Fifth Street. I'd like to know if they're aware of what's going on. I know at least 1,000 people that work there, and those 1,000 people take that bus. So, you know, it's a concern for them as well. Secondly, we have a rodent problem. With all the construction going on, the rodent problem's only going to get worse. I'd like that to be taken into consideration, maybe there's something that can be done about that.
So maybe just, as Joe already said, I'll say it again, just so that you know, road control spec is part of this contract.
Okay.
And I've actually lived in the past 2015, 2017, 18, three years now inside a Mast dot construction site, which had that rodent bait program.
Okay.
So it does...
Okay. I wanted him to bring up the slide because that's my house right there, and I've heard concerns about eminent domain and the state taking over. That's a big concern of mine. I'd like to know when we're going to find out if that's happening, and when that will be happening. It's also on your pamphlet here.
Correct. We're not, we're not taking any property on this project.
And how will I know if you're going to need to use my land for...
We're not taking any temporary easements either. All the work is going to occur with the Mass DOT right away.
Okay, alright.
If there's any change as a result of what we change on this project between now and then, we will come back and notify people. But I don't anticipate... But I don't anticipate any changes.
Okay. And the last thing I'd like to reiterate, as a bunch of people mentioned, structural damage. As you can see, I'm, I can literally reach out of my window and, you know, touch the bridge here. I've had, you know, insurance claims due to structural damage from the bridge before. I assume that during this construction, I'm going to, you know, see some sort of structural damage. Is there gonna be a budget in place for something like that? Will there be a foreman on site? I know you guys have a 24-hour support line, but if something happens during the middle of the night, I don't wanna be calling someone. I wanna be able to reach out and say, "Hey, you know, a bolt went through my window."
To answer that question, first of all, we will have monitoring. We are doing a survey of the homes that are that close to the bridge that may be impacted. We will have specifications for that. So, there'll be pre-inspections that'll be done and then post-construction inspections.
Okay.
As far as staffing, we will have staffing whenever this crew's working. But if you call the hotline, that's gonna be the quickest way to get to the foreman.
You guys have a foreman on site?
Of course. Absolutely.
All right. And, you know, I keep on thinking about stuff. All right, this is a personal question of mine. So, I worked at the bridge many years ago. I've been there for 43 years. My grandfather worked with the bridge. We have a fence that is going along the bend there. Is that something that will be replaced? Or what are your thoughts on that? There's a fence. There's a fence that was put up, and it was put up to protect people from throwing bottles and other stuff at the house. We've had stuff go through.
On the structure or down below?
It's on the structure. It's on the bridge.
That will all be replaced.
Okay.
The entire, correct. It'll be replaced and we'll probably put up a new snow fence. I assume that's a snow fence that you were referring to.
It wasn't a snow fence, no. They put it up to protect the house from people throwing debris from the bridge. And it was hitting the house, going through the windows. It almost killed a tenant of ours.
Seeing the close proximity, we're gonna look at snow fence there.
All right. All right. Perfect. And I think that is it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Damali Vido, you should still have me there. So, just three quick things. The first one is, I just wanna reemphasize noise mitigation for the homes along the bridge. Sleep is really important. We have children that have to go to school. We have parents, hard-working residents that live in that area. And it really isn't fair to have, to have to be subjected to all that noise while people are trying to sleep so they can earn a living and go to school. That's number one. Number two, there's a concern for, I don't know if in your study you were able to see how packed the 111 gets in the mornings, but it's like standing room only. And so, to go up that Everett Ave Bridge with the weight of all the people that are gonna be on the bus poses a huge safety threat. And I just wanted to make sure that that goes on the record. And lastly, I wanted to know if this planning studies and traffic studies that you've done to create this magical project can be made available to the public. That's it.
Yes, we can do that. Thank you.
When? When? I mean, you have it all.
We need to finalize it, but once it's finalized, we'll put it up.
Timeline. You have a timeline for everything else?
Which part? Are we talking about the local traffic study?
The local traffic study?
We want everything.
Or the regional?
Anything, any studies that you're basing this project on. I'm asking if you can make that available to the constituents.
We can. It's like the justification report for Ramp A and all the other studies. Yes, we can make that available.
Yes. And when?
We can make that available probably within the next couple of days. We've already made it available to the city manager, and we can certainly make it available to all the councils.
Thank you. And the public?
And the public.
Thank you.
Hi, David Charak. I'm back again. A previous... No, this will be very brief.
Is there anybody else in the audience who hasn't had a first bite of that? Going once, going twice?
Um, sorry. My name is Monica Elias, E-L-I-A-S. I just wanted to emphasize on the bus route, I was an ex-commuter on the bus. And I used to live on Beacon Street and would wait on Everett Ave. And sometimes the bus would skip us. And it was really horrible. And, you know, you just keep waiting. And back when I was going to college, sometimes I would be late. So, with this project ongoing, I encourage you guys to get a presentation from MBTA to speak to the commuters. And a lot of these people did not come tonight. And I think if it was better addressed and at a better, a bigger auditorium, that's the better way to deal with it. And then, I just had a suggestion 'cause I hear that Chelsea needs a lot of green space for kids. And I've seen some projects where a lot of parking lots are being transformed. Some parking spots are designed with green space around it. So, maybe underneath are bridges. You might consider that as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one thing on that. We've seen that a lot of people...
That me le di.
Dila.
Bueno.
That's good. I feel... We gave, we heard people who saw them. We sent them to the...
Que to es, to ver?
They made them come down.
Porque los tengo ustedes que... Que mi casa esta en el numero puente a dos metros. Y me ha quebrado las ventanas, la nieve este año. Me ha hecho muchas cosas. Y la casa, y es verdad lo que dicen ellos. La casa se me ha inundado de ratones atrás. De la rata que ven. Y entonces yo estoy bien fregado. Y hay una cosa ahí también que pasa del agua que se me mete toda, me lava la casa. Eso quiero decir. Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Yolanda Villanueva. Yo soy hispana. Yo no entiendo de esto, pero yo digo que cuando hay algo bueno para que una ciudad se ponga mejor, no sé. Yo entiendo que los puentes están bien mal y que se necesita. Si ustedes no hubieran dicho que había plomo, nadie lo hubiera sabido. Entonces, yo lo que vengo aquí es que mi casa, con mi esposo, compramos una casa hace 16 años. Está en la 65 de la Forest Street, y está a dos metros de donde pasa el puente, la buses arriba y los carros abajo. Y es un ruido exagerado.
So, she started by explaining, she understands that this could be something better for the city of Chelsea?
¿Cuál es su nombre? Villanueva? Villanueva. Ay, pero el dueño es Jaime Portillo, mi esposo.
And her husband, Jaime Portillo, is the... Jaime?
¿Cuál es su primer nombre? Reina Yolanda Villanueva. Y el de mi esposo es...
Reina.
Ricardo Portillo.
Reina. Villanueva. She understands that this could be a betterment for the city of Chelsea in terms of the bridge really does need its reconstruction. But she's, they are homeowners that are literally two meters from the bridge, and they have suffered all sorts of negative impacts. Rats flooding their backyard, water flooding their backyard and entering their property and their home.
Pues este año me quebró la ventana del segundo piso. Yo he hablado con el muchacho, ¿cómo se llama? Roy. Vine y mandé el bloque. Pero la verdad que si piensan hacer un puente así por allí, nosotros nos va a afectar. En el segundo piso yo tengo cuatro niños. Ah uno está recién nacido. Y ustedes saben que un niño es bien tremendo. Entonces, yo no sé qué voy a hacer porque el ruido, el ruido se me van a ir los anquilinos.
We've suffered broken windows. We've had terrible impacts from the noise. We have tenants on the second floor. They have babies. They have a four-month-old. The sound, they cannot put up with this sort of sound. You have to devise some sort of plan that's really going to impede this sound from affecting the residents.
Y yo quisiera que me hicieran el favor de ver qué se puede hacer porque no he podido arreglar la ventana y la gente allí está con este frío que hemos pasado. Entonces, porque a mí me dijo él que esperara que ustedes me iban a contestar. Yo hace ya días que puse esa petición con el señor aquí, que le digo el don Roy. Y entonces, yo necesito que me ayuden porque, a ver si pueden ponerme o las ventanas... Contra el ruido. O a ver qué sea. Porque si ustedes van a ir a ver, mi casa va a ser la más afectada porque está muy cerca. Yo traje unas fotos ahí para que ustedes las vean que va a estar tremendo.
Our windows are still broken. There's been cold and snow coming in. I've spoken to my city councilor, Roya Villanueva, who was here this evening and spoke to you to try to reach out to you. It's been days now that I've reached out to try to get these windows fixed. And not just replaced, but they have to be soundproof. There has to be something that's done to make this better. All right? I'm literally right next to this project. I brought photos to show you exactly where the house is located so you can see directly what the impact would be.
Y también hay una, de eso que ustedes pusieron allí que van a sostener el puente. El puente, una columna me está molestando porque tiene un pase de agua que se me va para mi casa y me la está lavando. Entonces, yo tanto día que yo no sabía que tenía que ir donde ustedes, dirigirme a ustedes. Ustedes tienen que hacer algo por mi casa también porque no se me puede caer.
And one of the columns that you're planning on restructuring, the water that's coming off of it is going directly into her backyard. So, these are things you need to take into account as you plan this restructuring. You need to understand the problems now so you can fix them correctly before you do any restructuring.
So, just to...
And that's it. And thank you.
Just to answer the question on the drainage, we are gonna be upgrading all the drainage.
Dicen que... O que van a mejorar todo el tramo. Están las fotos de la casa. Ustedes van a ver. Y eso es exagerado. Y pasa que va a haber mucho problema.
The cement that you see on the brick, that's a myth that hasn't been played because of the runoff from the bridge permeating the brick wall and they get water into the structure from the rain and splashing from the brick wall.
We'll make that permanently as part of this project in addition to location. Understood.
That shouldn't be whether or not the project happens. That has to be dealt with.
Does anyone else wanna speak? Okay, you're on, David.
Okay. I'm not gonna take up too much time here. I was gonna...
Are you gonna tell me you want Ramp A?
I want the whole bridge and viaduct gone. But considering, considering that you're probably gonna go ahead with the Tobin Bridge part of the project that's already gone out to bid, I wanna know if there's been any study done or consideration of putting a bus lane or high occupancy vehicle lane on the Tobin for a connection into Haymarket because this 111 bus. I was at a meeting at Green Roots. It was probably about a month ago or so. And much of this discussion at Green Roots was about the 111 bus and overcrowding and congestion on the bridge and the time it took to get into Boston. Mastioti's putting a bridge on North Washington Street with a bus lane. Take away a lane on the Tobin Bridge and make it high occupancy, a bus lane. It only, you know, inconvenience people that are coming from Saguas, Linfield, Peabody. I really don't care about those people. It's the people in Chelsea that need consideration. It's people in Chelsea that have been trod upon for 70 years. It's enough. You know, positive things need to happen in Chelsea. Not to stay doing things to Chelsea, should be doing things for Chelsea. This project really doesn't do much other than put perfume on a pig that's been there for 70 years. And I go back to riding the 111 bus. Before it was the 111, it was the 11 bus. You know, so I know about congestion and crowding on the buses from many years ago.
Thank you, David. Does anyone else wanna speak? Just have a couple of general comments. I wanna state that the entire team has been listening. We heard you loud and clear tonight. I didn't hear one yay for Ramp A. So, we did make a note of that. We'll be taking that back. We, before we make any decisions, we are gonna continue with a few more meetings. We haven't reached out yet to the business communities. We wanna hear from them. We need to reach out to them. We are gonna set up a meeting or request a meeting with the city council. We will be meeting with the city, we will be meeting with the city manager's office. We'll have those discussions after we've talked. Then I'd like to come back and do a public information meeting to talk about what it is we can and can't do on this project. Now, I would love to say we heard a lot of concerns tonight, a lot of existing conditions, a lot of impacts from our projects, from our project and projects going on simultaneously with this one. I would love to say that we can come in with this project and solve all of these problems. But the reality is, we can't.